There's a good chance you, your families and friends.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Watson.
Hi lad. Strong light game you have going on tonight there lad. You gotta, you get yourself a new lamp?
No, is it too bright?
No.
Oh, okay. It's always good to be seen, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know you had a cat.
I do. Shows up every once in a while.
When it's hungry?
Yeah. Commissioner Halt looking strong tonight.
Appreciate the compliment, Commissioner. I don't know about my lighting. Some, some meetings it's okay, but some it's not. I don't get what the hell is going on here, but.
All right, all right.
One of those things you put on your computer that kind of spotlight kind of depends on.
Like, look at lad, look how good lad's.
That's why, I know, that's why, you know, and then, but one time lad said that I had, you know, that my lighting was good. I'm like, but it's, but it's been the same. So I don't know what the hell is going on. If it's just the time of the day or what. I think what happens to you is you're, you have a camera built into your computer. It's seeing a lot of bright light behind you and it's compensating a little bit. So you're a little bit darker. So when you have that bright light behind you, you need more light on you.
Gotcha. Fair enough. All right.
Greg, it is 5:30. Would you like to begin the Zoom speech?
I would be happy to. Good evening, everyone. I'm City Administrator Greg Elliott. I'd like to address a few things before the mayor requests the roll call. This is the pre-meeting, which is a forum for the city commission to discuss various issues and topics. For much of the meeting, we asked the participants mute themselves to allow the commissioners to have their discussions and to minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. An opportunity for public comment will be provided at the end of the meeting and participants will be invited at that time to unmute and address the commission if they wish. Talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. If this happens during our meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We'll also turn over the video of the meeting to law enforcement for investigation. Thank you all for participating and Mary, I'll turn the meeting over to you for the roll call.
Roll call please, Robin.
Mayor He.
Present.
Commissioner Halt.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
All commission members present.
All right, I'll turn it back over to you, City Administrator Greg Elliott, to take over for the pre-meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on our pre-meeting agenda tonight is an update on our blight remediation efforts and City Attorney Henry Henigan is going to deliver that update.
Good evening, everyone. We just wanted to take a few minutes to touch base with you on how things are going and where the direction that Greg and I are working on with regards to blight. We had intended to actually amend our blight ordinance, but recently we've been really getting some great teamwork between code enforcement and the legal department and we would like to just keep moving forward with the current ordinance and only amend small parts as we, as we go, if we actually feel that we need to. Jake has done a great job with getting going on rental property inspections. He's reported back to us that in the last few months, he sent out letters regarding between two and 300 properties that needed to be scheduled for rental inspections. And since that time has been able to do all of those inspections except for about inspections, except for about 50 to 70 of them. And so when we met last week, they had already spoken with the APD because that's where our tickets go through. And they had come up with a short list where they figured that there are going to be about 50 rental properties that they are going to have to write municipal civil infractions on for failure to schedule the inspection. And so Larry over at APD, Deputy, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Van Alstine is prepared to get those tickets issued for us. And we're expecting about 50 new blight cases to hit the dockets over the next week to two weeks. What that's going to mean with violations on that particular section is that one, along with those violations, when they're mailed out, there will be a letter that is a notice of revocation that revokes the certificate of compliance that each landlord has when they register their property as a rental unit and then also when they comply with having the inspections and so on. Their failure to comply with that is going to result in the revocation of that certificate of compliance. Second, it means that once that certificate of compliance has been revoked, that the property is actually automatically deemed a nuisance under our ordinance. Then from that point, the civil infractions also make them appear in court so that we can get a court order to do the inspections and there'll be fines and costs associated with their failure to cooperate with us on scheduling the inspections. In addition to that, they will get one civil infraction for each unit in the building. So it's not just if you have a building with five apartments or 10 apartments and that you're going to get one civil infraction. The ordinance allows for us to issue one civil infraction for each individual unit. So depending on how many are in that building, it could be a pretty hefty cost for them if they have not scheduled the inspections. There have been two previous notices that went out to all the landlords. First, a nice letter asking that they schedule. And then a second letter saying, hey, maybe you missed our first letter. Here's another letter that says if you don't schedule, then we are going to take legal action. So we're following through on what code enforcement has told them that they're going to do. And we're just basically right now waiting on those infractions to be issued. It will be a large number of them at one time. And so we know the APD has told us it may take them a few days to get them done, but they definitely are going to work that into their, their schedule to get that out for us. So at this time, we don't want to make amendments right now because the way that everything is set up and now that we're, we have the manpower to actually do all these inspections, seems like this is, is something that's very workable and it's going to be useful to us. So we'd like to follow through on this. And then if we find little kinks here and there, come back and revisit if there needs to be any amendments on that front. And then the other update with regard to blight is, of course, we would still like to keep the blight manual that we looked at a few weeks back and we just like to add attachments to put the current ordinances in so that we can start to distribute that throughout the community. And since the last time we talked, I know that you all know that Commissioner Strayer was able to meet with some of the landlords in the community. And yesterday I was able to meet with the A3 Coalition, which is Adrian Residence. And we talked about blight actually for about an hour yesterday. They had reviewed the blight manual as a draft. They had lots of questions to ask. And we had great discussion about it. In fact, today I actually got a call from an individual who was there that said it was really great to know that they could have a contact with the city and that the city wanted to work with them in helping to make Adrian a better place as well. So they were really excited about all of that. And at the end of the meeting, they asked, what can we do to help? You know, we're, we're a small group, but what can we do to help? And so the idea was put out there that maybe they can start to get a group together that's volunteers in the community who we can then refer to, to help individuals who genuinely are not physically able to correct their blight issues or who are indigent and can't do the work and really need just some community help to get things done. And that they could also continue to help us in communicating to residents in the city what our goals are and and giving the information out and making sure that they know who their contacts are at City Hall so that there's not as much misinformation as there has been in the past and they know that we're taking the subject seriously and addressing things. So that meeting went really well. Overall, Commissioner Gauss was also there and he was asking hard questions while he was there, but but it went really well. And I think that we built a great relationship with them through that meeting that hopefully will continue in the months and years to come. So it's kind of where we're at. Do you guys have any questions for me on that?
I do, Tamara. So the, about the 50 to 70 owners who have not complied yet with scheduling, do those fall under, are they spread out all over or is it one or two or three landowners, property owners?
I don't think it's two or three Commissioner Roberts, but I do think it's a small number of property owners that own multiple properties from my understanding. So some of those who are looking at it more as a commercial business and, and just aren't necessarily accustomed to such strict enforcement. But we'll work with them and we'll, we'll get them there and, and then hopefully in the future, it won't be a big issue.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else on that item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, if not, we have what they hope to be our ultimate discussion on Miles Drive teed up for you this evening. I think Matt is here and he and I had a chance to talk this afternoon. I think we have now a path forward, although it may require us asking you to table the item that's on for action tonight. Matt, do you want to discuss the latest on this?
Sure. So in the last week, we have received another commitment. This one is from Irvin Industries, who is also in Madison Township. They have verbally committed $10,000 so to the project and Sterling Estates, as I mentioned before, has committed $35,000. So Greg and I are going to be working on getting some contracts in place for those to, to to actually commit the, the funding to the project. And I think the best course of action would be to put a special assessment on the other businesses within the city. That way we have commitment from the businesses outside the city and then we can special assess the businesses with inside the city.
And so I don't know if it was clear from Matt's comments, but that by virtue of these two commitments, we've, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, we have the, the outside of the city property owners who have access to miles committed to a contribution. We just need to reduce that commitment to writing. And then through the special assessment process, we would be able to spread a proportionate commitment to the property owners that are in the cities. Is that accurate, Matt?
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
And I would say we, you know, we are obviously one of those property owners as well with the parks garage there. And so it'd be appropriate for the city to take a piece of that as well.
If we change the, if we have a special assessment, does that change the type of work that we're going to do on the street?
No, that does not. We'd still plan to do a base stabilization yet this spring.
Okay. So we can legally special assess a road outside of curb and gutter to improve, whether it be a business or residential property? So that means we, so you're telling me we can special assess any road in the city for anything? Is that, is that what I'm gathering here or?
But we can. It's a two-step process. The first, you, there's two hearings involved. The first one determines that the improvement is necessary. And then the second one is with regard to the proposed special assessment role. In other words, the amount that's going to be assessed to each property owner. I don't know that we would try to assess 100% of the cost. I think what we would try to do is spread an amount equal to what others are committing to to the other property owners who have not yet ponied up, if you will, in terms of their own cooperation and, and like Matt says, those are all in the city. And though, so those, those property owners are subject to the special assessment process. We would not be able to assess the property owners outside of the city. So we have to contract with them separately.
Right, but I, I understand that, but my, my ultimate thinking of special assessments was the reason why we're legally allowed to do it via state statutes because it improves the property owner's property, curb and gutter, not the actual road. So, and, and Matt can help me understand this. If, if so, these, the businesses that are in the city, we have reached out to them and they have, and, and they have not been willing to kick in anything up to this point, right? Or am I wrong?
We, we had initial conversations with them and they did not seem opposed to the idea. They just didn't know how much they could afford at the time. So we've been reaching out to them every day since and we have not heard back yet. So they weren't opposed to it. They just, when we threw some initial figures at them of the project cost, they weren't sure how much they could really afford to pitch in.
Yeah, I get, I mean, that's my point. I, I understand that they don't, they want to wait and see how much money they can afford, but it's like to force a business in the city to pay for a road when, when, when it's not a curb and gutter situation, pretty much because other citizens in, in the neighboring, we'll call it neighborhood, has access to that road. So I mean, if, if you put me in that role, again, and, and I'm not, I'm against this from the get-go because I, I think it's ridiculous. We've been talking about this because of complaints from, from another jurisdiction, but I would have a problem with, with, with the city's special assess me and my property based on the complaints of friendly villagers is right, right directly behind me, which is Madison Township, I believe. Do you, do you know what I'm saying? I mean, I'm just.
Well, it, it's not uncommon in other jurisdictions. Certainly it's been our custom to, to assess the cost of curb and gutter, but in other jurisdictions, particularly subdivision streets, and this is in the, sort of in the nature of that, it's a street that only serves a limited number of properties and no one else. It's very common for tho, for those sorts of streets when they're repaved to, for 100% of that cost to be assessed to the abutting property owners. The standard for a special assessment is whether or not it's proportionate to their benefit. And in this case, you know, like I say, we would not propose to assess 100% of the cost. We would propose to assess an amount that is equal to what others have agreed to, the, the amount to which others have agreed to participate. You know, so that there, there's no free riders in terms of of the project. And this road doesn't, I mean, it's a, it's a difficult situation because it serves really only these properties. But the, the way the, the city properties are configured in it, you basically can't do any part of that without, without doing all of it, right? I mean, you need all, virtually all of the road to be able to complete service to the city, the properties that are within the city. But there, you know, there's absolutely nothing wrong with, I mean, you philosophically, you may have a problem with it, but legally there's nothing wrong with assessing the cost to, to the abutting property owners in a situation like this. They would have an opportunity to. To the abutting property owners in a situation like this. They would have an opportunity to appeal. If they don't agree with the amount of the assessment, there's they have a path. Through the normal assessing appeal process. To go ultimately to the to the tax tribunal to challenge that assessment.
I guess m- my spot is. I'm fine with Urban and Sterling Estates making investments in that road, since they're not paying City of Adrian. Property tax, which should serve that road, so. I mean, even without a special assessment district, nobody's getting a free ride if those two are making the investments, right?
Not in the sense that they are paying city taxes. It is, however, it it's it's unlike some other roads that we do where. You know, there are many users across the city, basically everybody in the city benefits because it's part of the total road system of the city. This is a dead end road. It serves only who it serves and no one else.
But I think what Commissioner Watson's saying is that they already have skin in the game because they pay property tax twice a year. So we're asking them to pay more, and again, this is not a curb and gutter, this is, and and I believe you have to show that. You have to show that the 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 market value of the property. Improves based on the public improvement. Am I wrong on that, or?
No, I don't think it's specifically tied to the market value. I think it, like I say, it's it has to be proportionate to. To the amount that is being assessed, in other words. It has to be a benefit and it has to be done, being done in a proportionate way, but it doesn't, there's not a one-to-one relationship between market value and the amount of the assessment. It doesn't have to increase the value of the property by that same amount that it costs.
Yeah, I I'm for the the investments from Urban and Sterling Estates. I am not not so much in favor of the special assessment. Like that, that's already being invested by people being property owners along that road.
Well, we can, we can do it either way. You know, what what we put on the agenda originally contemplated us. You know, using our. Available funds that are in the local and major road fund to to do it. And we could still do that. I would still want to, however, not take action. Before we nail down the commitments of the of the two Madison Township properties.
You know, I I guess. I'm with Commissioner Watson, you know, there's there's a growing thing about, you know, we'll put our business in Madison Township because the taxes are cheaper. I keep thinking about that, you know, GoCo223, their taxes are cheaper than my South Main location when it comes to square footage and where it's at. So with that being said, why would I support? A taxpaying entity in the city. That's already paying property taxes, already, you know, putting their fair share into the pot. To special assess them. It just doesn't, it doesn't feel right to me. It's always, you know, hey, we'll buy a house in the township, we'll 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 put our business on South 223. Well, in this case, you know, let's let's look out for our businesses now and 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 that's where I'm at with it. It just, this this doesn't feel right.
I didn't even know that was a thing that we could do either without curb and gutter. I I was not aware of that, and my. My concern is that both PPG and Roto, which I think are the two main ones we're talking about, their main entrance. From the way I can see it from driving by there is on Division. I think that's just a side. Road, you know, like they they're using that occasionally. That's not their like main entrance and their main traffic flow. And I I just, I have deep reservations about going after them with a special assessment for. A side road that they use once in a while possibly. I just don't see. I I mean, I've seen trucks going in there and I see them coming in off of Division, so that's why. That that highly concerns me with special assessing them, and also I I hear it all the time that. We're not friendly to businesses or we're not giving them a break and and just like Commissioner Halt said. They're like, well, we'll go to the township. It's cheaper to be there, you know, and I we need to be business friendly and we need to be taking care of our businesses that are in. In the city and it would be a different story, in my opinion, if their main frontage was on Miles Drive, but it's not, and that's why I have concerns with it.
There is one, and Matt, maybe you can. Tell us who owns that one. The the business to the east. Of Parks Garage is in the city. Who's does that, Matt?
Yeah, that's that's PPG, and they do in fact have an entrance off of Division. But they, the other building in back is a separate department of theirs that they still use as well.
That that only has access off of Miles, correct?
I I don't know if they ever connected that. I know they had intentions to connect it at one point, but I don't know if they ever did.
I guess as a property owner that owns a property in the City of Adrian and a property in Adrian Township. My taxes is more in the city. This is one of those cases, but I get better services. I get I get I get better police protection, fire protection, et cetera, and and then. I'm not, I'm not greasing a a taxpaying city business just because. And I feel bad for Matt. He feels a lot of complaints. I'm sure Greg, your inbox is full too, but. It's not my problem. I mean, this is me personally, it's not my problem. It's 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 one of those things where. And and I understand the township not wanting to kick in money either, because I know what the tech, what you get from taxes from a trailer park type of unit in a municipality, it's very low. So I understand their position on that too, but. I just, you know, I just always hear about people moving outside the city for, you know, for cheaper taxes and and so. I have a problem with taxing our resident, our 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 commercial businesses. From a special assessment based on complaints from other citizens in other m- another municipality. So I'll leave you, I'll leave you guys with that. Those are just my personal thoughts and.
I agree with Commissioner Hilton, Mayor Heath. I'm not in favor of taxing our city businesses. I think right now, if I understand correctly, the cost was about a hundred and forty thousand. Now it's down to hopefully ninety five thousand to our city residents. It's. It's our job as the City of Adrian to take care of our roads. Whether who uses them or who lives on them or not. And if those businesses want to pitch in and be a good city, you know, resident, that's great, but I don't think we should. Penalize them if they don't choose to. Because as Commissioner Halt said, they are already paying taxes for this service that we should. Already be providing them, which is maintaining our roads. So I think I would propose, I know this has been going on for months, year now, I'm not sure. That we get the commitments in place with the contracts with Urban and Sterling Estates, and we move forward with paying the rest. Out of our. Road funds.
Okay, well, we can do that, and what I would ask when we get to the item, the action item on the regular agenda. Is that you table that specifically to. If you're okay with this, to our special meeting that we have for the budget workshop and. That we use that intervening week to get those. Contracts signed, because Matt has a need to award the contract to get, this has got all of our road projects in it and. It's actually a different contractor, as you may have noticed, if we aren't doing Miles Drive. Because of the way the unit price has worked out than if we are doing Miles Drive, and so. If we're okay with proceeding with Miles Drive, then we'll get those two contracts worked up. Tamara and I talked about it on staff meeting a little bit this morning. We'll get those two contracts worked up. I- in the intervening time, and then we'll have that just as the one action item on your special meeting agenda, if that's okay. So that we can have those locked up before we before we award the bid. Any objections to that?
No.
Okay, great. That's what we'll do. Thank you. Next item on our pre-meeting discussion is an update on the acoustic. Panels for the Chambers AV upgrade. We have. An ability, it would be an extra, it would be a change order, but we have an ability to. With respect to some of the eye level. Acoustical panels to add. Histor- a a cover on them, if you will, that would be a historic photograph. And Drake is here, I think, in the in the pre-meeting tonight to to discuss in more detail. About that. And we have mock-up as well of what those might look like, and and there's some pricing available. Just trying to gauge your interest in this. So that we can. Move forward with the, keep the project moving forward. And in order anything we might need, I think at the outside, you know, if we if we did seven of these, which would be all the eye level. Panels, it would be slightly over three thousand dollars extra to do that. We're, you know, we're concerned about. Not overwhelming the space with the with the sound panels. There's a lot of them. Most of them are small, though, but some of them. Do need to be down at eye level. Most will be up near the ceiling. And some of them need, and we've done our best to choose colors that will blend in with the with the ceiling and the walls, but. Where they're down, where you can see them. We thought this would be a nice option to make them more interesting and attractive, and. With that, I'll turn it over to to Drake to discuss how those would work.
Yes, so as Greg said. It helps for our acoustic situation to have as many of our panels as possible close to the people who will be benefiting from them. And this does present an aesthetics trade-off because you don't want. A lot of these panels down near eye level where they're just visually overwhelming. So this is a product from one of the vendors that I use where. They can print something on the fabric covering of one of these panels, and they come in different sizes. They're a little bit pricier than just your regular acoustic panel, and the difference is you have to use. A a system that allows for the fabric to be printed on and still be acoustically transparent, so the sound passes through instead of just reflecting off. I have a variety of different sizes that I can go with. What you're seeing right here. In the back corner, those are four foot by three foot panels. They're two inches thick, and then. In the back wall closest to Mommy Street, those are four foot. I'm sorry, six foot by four foot panels. What we're looking at right here in terms of rough placement, we could put seven of these panels up in total. We could put. Three of the big ones up, so the one that you see right here, that's closest to Mommy Street, one on the mirror opposite wall of that. We could put one big panel on the wall in between the windows facing the police station. There is a chimney on the opposite wall that already has a decorative clock on there, so it'd be a little awkward to put a panel up there. And then again, just the smaller panels in those back corners. So any questions or thoughts so far on this option?
Can you go through the pricing there, Drake?
Yes, yes, so actually let me pull up the email that I sent to Michelle here. All right, so the cost per panel from the from the vendor, this is before shipping. For a six by four, that is four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-five cents, and for a four by three, that's three hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-five cents.
That's additional, or that that's the total price? We're gonna, we've got a price already baked in there that we're gonna put these up, correct?
So the price that we already have worked out for the acoustic treatment package. Is for generic non-printed panels that would be going. In visually not obtrusive places, so this would be an additional cost on top of that. That allows us to put. More panels down at eye level without them being obvious, so it's a way of. Like the artwork behind you, I see a lot of greens, so I don't think that's real, but it looks nicer down there.
Sure, and in your opinion, in your professional opinion, these these eye level panels will make a substantial difference, a little difference, some difference in the in the quality of audio?
Putting more of the panels down by eye level will make a substantial difference. And the reason they do that, so imagine our speakers on those posts. In the middle of the room. What we're trying to do is capture first reflections off the wall, so the sound hits the wall, it comes back, it creates an echo. The most efficient places to do that at our are at our first reflection points, so imagine that our walls are mirrors. Wherever you would see that speaker first reflecting. Is where you'd want to put a panel ideally, so these would be in our most optimal location for capturing sound. And then other panels, which would be farther up on the ceiling, more in the corners, those are kind of for our secondary and tertiary reflections, so that captures that long. Two, three second wash that we have right now.
So Drake, so these panels are going to be here whether they. Have the pictures or not then because we need them in these locations, correct?
If we do not go with a picture option, I would pull some of our other quota of panels. Down to eye level and put them across in some of these locations, yes.
I I I wouldn't want just generic, I mean, I really like, I think the pictures are cool, I mean, personally, so I mean, I wouldn't. Want just some generic panels to be put down in, you know, wherever, I mean, it it's a beautiful building. I think the audio is very important because we've had a lot of our, especially our senior citizens, when they come in there and want, you know, listen to me, they have issues. With hearing and 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 so, but I think if we're gonna do it, we should do it right, and and the pictures look really cool to me, so.
I agree.
Yeah, I was very excited when I heard about this because I thought it's just, it's cool to have some history in. That that building and and be able to have that there. I I think that is a great. It it's just a nice visual. I I wouldn't want to look at generic. That's why I was asking that question, if that would be generic, it either way, that's exactly why I asked that.
Hey, Lad, did you take those pictures?
I was gonna ask that question too. You didn't hear us.
Hey, Lad, did you take those pictures?
You're funny.
So Drake, there is no difference between a picture quality, soundboard or. Panel and a one with non-pictures, correct?
If you get into the nitty-gritty of it, there is a technical difference. Because when you print on fabric, the ink that stays in the fabric is more reflective of the sound than the fabric itself. So, for example, the way that they print on these, if you were to print. A full color, beautiful photo of some flowers or a bird, like Lad's been putting on Facebook here lately. That's a lot of ink, so that fills up a lot of the pores of the fabric, so that would be more reflective. An old photograph where it's mostly just black and white. Especially if I can do some digital adjustments to the photograph to make sure there's not a lot of heavy ink going to be printed. That lessens that difference. There still will be some difference, but it lessens that difference.
Would would we ever notice the difference if you hadn't told us that?
Most likely, no.
And what what's the total cost of the historic photograph upgrade?
So if we go with all seven panels. With installation, that would be three thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. If we go with just. The three big panels, so this would be the two along the back walls closest to Mommy Street and the one. Closest to the police station, that would be eighteen hundred dollars and eight cents, I'm sorry, eighteen, yes, eighteen hundred and eight dollars and seventy-two cents, there you go, I need new glasses. If we were to go a halfway route, so the three big panels and then sort of four small panels, we went with two small panels. That would be two thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
It's a historic building. It deserves historic photographs. I mean, my opinion is it's worth the thirty-five hundred dollars.
I agree. I don't want to do it halfway and then. Six months down the road, think, oh, yeah, we should have done all seven.
I think that the more, you know, because we're gonna be going Zoom too, once we get back in person. I think that's anyway, we can cut down the echoing in there is, is put 20 up there if you need to. I mean, I, it, it gets bad sometimes. So.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll make that happen. Uh, wanted to share that with you and make sure you're okay with that before we prove the change order. Anything more on that? Uh, the next item is, uh, you reference your meeting schedule and by that we mean your first meeting in April. Uh, we've found a lot of folks are not gonna be in town this week because it's spring break. The planning commission uh, whose meeting would have been the day after yours has already canceled that meeting and, uh, rescheduled it for the following Tuesday. As has the zoning board appeals. So we wanted to give you the option, uh, if you were interested in, in maybe rescheduling that meeting to the following, uh, Monday.
I emailed you and the mayor and, and I was, you know, I, I seen these on the pre meeting agenda. I didn't know what it meant. So, but I was trying to call in already for that first meeting in April and, and, and you guys both responded to be saying that that's what that item's, uh, up for discussion for. So yeah, I'm not gonna be in town on that first Monday. I really don't wanna have to think about zooming in from Florida either. So, um, again, that's just, that's just me. So.
Reschedule please.
Fine with me.
I'd rather not make Commissioner Roberts have to zoom in two Mondays in a row. That would be horrible because she's on a nice vacation and she's already having to do it once for us. So.
It's okay. I'm still working some of the time too. So, but I would, I would have made it whatever we can do, but it would be nice if we could move it to the 12th.
Okay. We'll make that happen too.
Thank you.
Any more on that?
What, one of the, so if we move it to the 12th, then are we going to still have a regular meeting on the 19th? Or would that move to the 26th?
I think we gotta pay bills, I think. So yeah, it might be the Brazilian scheduled 19th, I think. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I don't know. It's just my thought. I don't know.
It's just one week later.
Right.
We talk. We'll bump up against your regular meeting one way or the other, right? If you move to the 19th meeting, then you'd be bumping up against the main meetings. So.
Okay.
Right. Our fifth item is food trucks. So back before the pandemic, back in actually January of last of last year, um, we had been discussing at staff level of the idea of making provision in our ordinances to allow uh, what's tends to be called mobile food vending, uh, colloquially food trucks. Uh, but the mobile food vending refers to all manner of things, whether or not it be in a truck. Uh, currently, and we get a lot of calls about this, folks wanting to do it. Currently, uh, the only procedure we have for allowing it is, uh, and this is only on private property, is through a temporary use permit that, um, is a pretty cumbersome procedure in the zoning ordinance that goes before. I believe the zoning board appeals, as I recall, and it, it's a long term. Probably, it takes a long time to, to do it. And most folks find that the timeframe required to do that is unrealistic. And also the, you know, it just, just doesn't work for the repetitive nature of what people, some people wanna do. Uh, I've written in the, in the past, in my prior life, as planning consultant ordinances on this. I actually really just plagiarized Traverse City's ordinance, which is a, a very simple and uh, easy to administer ordinance that they came up with. And it works kind of like this, that you, you adopt an ordinance that creates a business license, similar to other business licenses that we have for, for food trucks or mobile food vending. And that i- in the, in the ordinance contemplates the city commission establishing locations where the activity can occur on public property. It isn't part of the ordinance. It's done by resolution, as is the fee schedule for it, also done by resolution after the fact. Uh, and then, and the reason for that is that you, you wanna, tend to wanna change those from time to time. Try out areas, try, you know, try out a fee structure, but have flexibility to be able to amend that by just resolution. When we were talking about it at staff level, uh, we were contemplating in terms of public property, allowing it uh, in the municipal parking lots. I mean, some places allow it right on the street. I, I wouldn't recommend that. I don't think our businesses would appreciate that. And, and that becomes the issue with it typically is that nobody wants that happening. No, nobody wants that competing with their business. Um, studies that have been done show that it does not, that the people who are going to buy from food trucks um, are not choosing that over, uh, an in-person dining experience. It, they compete. Studies have shown with fast food with like the McDonald's and the, and the drive-throughs of the world. But they don't tend to compete with sit-down restaurants that would be located in downtown. So a lot of communities allow them. You know, in municipal parking lots, in park, public parks, uh, but not necessarily on the street. Uh, additionally, the, the, the overall ordinance structure that we were contemplating would allow them on private property by right in the commercial districts, obviously, if uh, if there's available parking to park them. In other words, you've got excess parking, as there's off-street parking on your site. Um, then you would be able to park a food truck there from time to time. Again, you'd still have to get your permit, but um, uh, you wouldn't have to, it, you wouldn't, it would be a different fee structure because it's private property as opposed to public property. The fees tend to be higher for public property because you're using the public property to do your, to do your business. Uh, before we go down a path of, of trying to bring anything formally and of you in this regard, obviously, we wanna get your temperature on it, whether it's something uh, that you're interested in doing or not interested in doing, or wanna hear more about. Uh, and so that's our purpose in putting it on the agenda tonight. Happy to answer any questions that you have about what I've said so far as well.
Would this be sort of like the same kind of permit that somebody would get who wanted to sell fireworks at July, on July 4th?
That's the current process. They would have to get that kind of a permit. And like I say, those are typically for a week or a two-week period, you know, they're not for random times throughout the year. And it has a a long lead time to get it, right? You gotta have a public hearing before the zoning board of appeals. As you know, you've seen some of those being on the CBA.
Right. But I guess, so also, so we could permit somebody to have a, a traveling business for a month, but somebody else three months. It's, it's sort of per individual business then?
Um, the permits wouldn't I mean, it, it can work different ways, but the, the permits would allow you to utilize public property, you know, seasonally typically. You know, and so you'd issue a permit to a food vendor and maybe you limit how many of those you're gonna issue. Uh, and that would entitle them to park in the available areas, or you could issue them per available area. So yeah, you could issue X number of permits for the church street lot, for example. Um, you know, but, but those would tend to be seasonal, but they could be one-time permits as well, depending on what a vendor wanted.
I know. I'm not crazy about them competing with standalone restaurants, but I could see where it could be helpful for the farmer's market because they said they've had issue, uh, with that in the past. That, uh, the cost of bringing in a food truck just for the farmer's market was prohibitive. And I don't know what the cost would be for what we're talking about here, but, uh, with limited hours, maybe it would be something that would work for them.
Yeah, technically I don't think it would be, they're, they are allowed to bring in a food truck right now because as I said, the procedure is that you go to the zoning board of appeals and get a temporary use permit.
I'd like to see further investigation into this. So, I mean, I see them popping up and, and if for no other reason than enforcement and safety of the public. Um, you know, I'm not sure the carney wagon that pops over here behind Ronnie's Market. Is that healthy? Is that good for our people? Is that, you know, i- is that okay? I don't know. Um, I don't know if they got a health permit or not, but, um, I think that if they do have to, you know, present something to, to city hall to get a permit for some amount of time, I think that's a good idea. And, and, and you know, whether it's a day to go down and sell donuts behind Trestle Park because there's a baseball tournament going on. Or if it's for Saturday mornings to, you know, sell coffee in, in something at, at the farmer's market. Do it. I mean, these are all opportunities.
That was one question I had. Are you looking, is the staff, Greg, looking at like where it's a you know, just a limited amount of time. So they're not like there all day into the evening. Is it just certain days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, you know, like, like, how are you looking at that structure?
Um, I don't know that we've advanced to that point of deciding, you know, what, what, I, I mean, as much as possible, we wanna let the market decide. You know, what the demand would be. Um, but with respect to, and with respect to private property, the structure that we've contemplated would not necessarily limit it. But with respect to public property, you know, your permit would deter, yeah, that they, they would be able to get a permit for the times that they feel like they wanna do their business, uh, is what we envisioned.
I do know that since this was already on the pre-meeting agenda, I actually had a few people reach out to me. Um, and they, the comments I was already getting on it, that's all they saw was food truck discussion, but they said, oh, this is great. You're having this discussion. The, the, the feedback was all positive, just so you know that I had received so far. Now, um, a lot of them, they either it's they had a grandchild or a child of them and they just want a hot dog and they wanna be able to go in and grab that, or they just wanna grab a Coke really fast. Um, but the other comments that I received were also that this would help, you know, the DARA, you know, just people can get that alcoholic drink, you know, and walk around with it. And if the food trucks are located within that DARA district, they can go get maybe a, a greasy hamburger they can't get anywhere else. You know, I mean, I, I know there's other places that do have it that are dining, but maybe they wanna walk around with that drink and they just wanna have that, that, and maybe unhealthy food or maybe healthy food, um, for you. But um, I, I am receiving already, you know, some feedback from, from a few citizens that just, that was their, their thoughts on it, just to kind of think about that. There's just been times they said where they just really wanted a fast hot dog for their child or whatever it might be. And we just didn't have that option and they didn't wanna go dine in with, with those children. Um, so it was coming more from families, definitely is where I was already getting that feedback. Um, but I do have a question when it comes to the private. So I'm gonna use an example. So are you saying that like, um, so El Chap's does have, they do have a food truck as well. So they could on their own property set up a food, their food truck as well on their private property. So if somebody didn't wanna go dine in, but they really wanted El Chap's, they could go to their food truck. Is it, a- am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, as, as the current draft of the ordinances, well, the current vision of the ordinance that, because that that piece would have to go in the zoning ordinance, but that, that is the vision that we've had. It doesn't have to be so, but that, that's, that's sort of been our operating assumption as we've been working on it.
Thank you.
I had a great tour of the parks with Jason Lawrence, uh, just a little while back. And I think it would be a great piece. We have so many beautiful parks. It would be great to get some food trucks in there and get people using our parks more and being able to get a snack there while they're, you know, hiking, whatever in the parks too. I think that's a really cool idea.
Yeah, I, I, I like the parks idea, heritage island, Little League, all that and so on. But you know, I'm, I, I guess I'm a little lukewarm to getting around the downtown area, at least until these COVID restrictions are lifted. We got restaurants at 50% capacity. None of them are making a profit right now. They're just, they're, they're just trying to get through so once they can get back to 100%. So, um, I mean, you know, the mayor said that she's, she's sort of all positive now, but if we start parking food trucks downtown everywhere, then um, I think we'll all be very, uh, especially now. I mean, again, hopefully ride this, uh, in a couple of months and, 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 and they can get back to doing business as normal. But um, I'm lukewarm to the idea of downtown, um, right now, I guess. So, but the parks, springtime, Little League, uh, baseball tournaments in the morning. I mean, I'm all for that, but um, not, I'm not saying no, in, in my personal opinion, but I'm lukewarm to that because again, you have a again, yeah, it's well, if you have a taxpaying entity and you have a non-taxpaying entity and you know, even though they're not, you know, Greg, you said that they're not in competition, but that's, I mean, I'm sure those statistics are restaurants with full capacity. So, um, at 50%, they're not making any money right now. So, um, again, I'm, I'm a little lukewarm to that. I like, I like food trucks. I mean, uh, you know, if they're done right, I mean, they have great food and um, it's quick, but, um, I don't know how I feel about it just parked all over downtown quite yet. So.
I think we have, and I think, um, I know Lad's right across from my office, though I know like, um, Sunny Side's food truck used to pull up at Frosty Boy's. So when you, I think you have them parking downtown just on a private property anyways. So.
We had, I mean, Maria Parker truck in front of our workers' place. And I mean, I think we all seen how that turned out on social media. He was not happy.
Yeah.
Um, but again, I, I like food trucks. I mean, it's the modern thing to do and and, and you're in a vibrant downtown, but right now with the restrictions, I mean, that's, I'm a little lukewarm to that. So.
It, it did come up already in a DDA discussion and this was pre-pandemic or maybe the very beginning, beginning of the pandemic. Um, it was being discussed because they, they're, they are concerned. There, there were owners there that were concerned about it. And I, I do know there was concern about it being like, maybe the first thing you see when you pull into downtown and, and it, and it ticking away from that business. And we definitely don't want them on the streets. I, I agree wholeheartedly with that. That's, you know, um, I know that, you know, I, I'm, I just, I agree. I think let's start at the parks. Honestly, um, when the city administrator I met last week, um, and he brought up putting this on the agenda, I literally said, Comstock Park, I know it's close to downtown, but there are times where maybe, and you'd have the limit, you could only probably have one there because of space. But there's, there are people that, that walk in that area even, um, that you know, there's not much around there and maybe they just wanna quick, you know, a hot chocolate or a hot dog or whatever it might be. But we just need to be very cognizant that we are not taking away from those downtown businesses. So I'm wholeheartedly in agreement. The closer we can get them to any kind of park and keeping them away from downtown. And I, I do know that the DDA was also very concerned about that. Um, and they were already hearing co- you know, like concerns about that because I know like during the, I do believe it was during the Christmas parade, um, in 2019 that you know, there, a business could sponsor to put a food truck in front of them and some did. And, um, I, I know that it kind of created a, a little hot debate after that. So um, I, I do wanna make sure we're not seeing them on the streets or in like very visible locations when it comes to that anywhere near downtown. I will agree with that.
Yeah, I reached out to, uh, one local restaurant downtown Saturday and they definitely had concerns. But I do love the idea of the parks.
I like the idea of the parks also. Um, but I've talked to a lot of businesses downtown that are not restaurants. And they would love to have food trucks down there to draw customers to places other than just the restaurants. They don't see it as being a a competition with the, um, with the restaurants. I think like the administrator said, um, they see it as being an opportunity for families to wander around downtown, particularly on First Fridays and places like that, to get a hot dog or a Coke, as the, as the mayor said. Um, and not wanna drive, you know, pull their three kids into, into a sit-down restaurant. So again, I understand the point of view and what Commissioner Health said right now with 50% is probably not the right time to deal with the 50% capacity, but um, in the long term, maybe we need to, you know, take another look at it as well.
The Traverse City came up and, uh, if you're going east to west right along their main street, first thing you see is a thing called the Little Fleet. And it's a, it's, it's a And it's a, it's it's a private endeavor, and I'm sure these people pay rent on it, but it's six or eight food trucks pulled into a front parking lot. Um, it's an interesting idea or concept. Um, it's not part of the city, but, um, you know, it's it's another restaurant option. And I agree, putting them immediately in front of a restaurant isn't a good idea, or or having long-term leases in our parking lots, I'm not that crazy about, but um, you know, that it's another dining option, and and that's competition, and and that's okay.
I've heard it.
I I was gonna agree with Gordon. I think it's a, I think that, um, downtown businesses or families, that it's a great idea too, but I also think that, you know, a hot dog stand is a different cost than going into a restaurant with a family too, and economically, I think a a hot dog food truck or something like that might be good for our community members that maybe don't have the funding to step into another restaurant. Um, so I think that there's, um, a place for all of that. Um, because I, we all have a time where we want to go into a restaurant, but we also have those moments where we're on the fly and we need a hot dog to go. So I think there's like, I think there's opportunity for both.
I go back to the original question. I think this is a absolutely a topic worth exploring and and investigating different options and and at least starting this idea or process.
You know, Commissioner Watson too, I'd like to get more information about the Traverse City, um,
Yeah.
experience, if you will, because it's been suggested by at least one of citizens, uh, who spoke to me about doing a similar kind of thing with five or six food trucks all in one location like Heritage Park.
Yeah.
Something like that, it would be a great opportunity, and almost make Heritage Park a destination. Um, you know, to go, be at the park, you know, eat at the food trucks or whatnot. So, again, like you, I'd like to see a little more investigation about this.
So the 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 catch with the Traverse City one is is that it used to be a party store, and and what they did was they opened up the front of the party store, put garage doors on it, and now that's a bar that has like a beer garden kind of feel to it, and then out in the front yard is six or eight food trucks. So I mean, it's it's a private business, but my point in making those comments is it's just another dining option.
Yeah, there's a version of that in, uh, Ferneal as well, uh, called Detroit, Detroit Fleet, F L E A T, or it used to be there a couple of years ago. I don't know if it's still there.
I also know, you know, there's, there's still a lot of people that are very concerned with being in confined spaces of a lot of people, and they're, they're very nervous with COVID, and you know, um, that's another thing to consider. The food trucks, they're out, they're walking around, they're outside. I mean, they may be sitting at a park, but you know, they're that that's a a comfort level for for certain people too, because I have also heard that.
All right. Well, we can, we can bring back some more of the materials that we've been working on, uh, for future pre-meetings, so we can move the discussion forward. Um, under any scenario, I don't know that it's going to reach its fruition before we're, you know, out out of capacity limits on the indoor dining, because it'll take a while still. Anything else on that topic? If not, that's, there, that's all I had for the scheduled items for the pre-meeting.
Are there any other items that anybody would like to bring up from the commission? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to public comment. At this time, it is public comment. Um, for the record, please state your name and address.
Uh, Ken Tokar's, 110 South Locust. Uh, you guys talked about blight today. I guess a couple ads with blight, um, would be to create some type of mechanism for residents to tell the city that, hey, someone is renting out an apartment that, um, maybe they're illegally renting it out, or they have an Airbnb, so they could get on the list. The other thing with blight and ordinances is I believe the city charter says that people can be charged up to $500 and 90 days in jail for not following the city ordinances. I guess for, um, uh, attorney heading in, I guess, could the city council be legal, be bound to that going the other direction for not enforcing an ordinance? So, for instance, like not enforcing, um, on-street parking after hours, could the commissioners potentially um, be subject to a $500 fine or 90 days in jail? That's it. I'm Blight. Let's go to Miles Drive. Um, I agree with Mr. Health. I wish I could have been there saying, go Alan, go Alan, um, because I I I think that's your, it's a slippery slope with the roads. But I also want to bring up the debt, the DDA. I mean, you guys are spending, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on streetlights for the DDA, and you're not charging a special assessment district for those lights. If you go through their charter, it specifically says you can charge a special assessment district, and you're not. Um, you know, if the DDA is going to get streetlights, then, hey, Ken Tokar's would like a streetlight in front of his house. Um, the last thing I wanted to talk about, um, I think you guys had a very healthy conversation with respect to the sound panels. Um, I enjoyed hearing it. Um, I guess my only question is, and this would probably go to, uh, Matt, is what happened with the dog park? Why didn't we have these conversations? Um, you know, I'm, I'm sitting on the other end dark. I'm thinking you were micromanaged and that maybe some commissioner was on your back telling you, do this, do this, and do this, and that's why we went over the budget. So I got maybe 30 seconds left, and I was hoping that maybe Matt could kind of let us know what was different about the sound panels and what didn't take place with the dog park, and maybe if there needs to be some type of change, so he's not micromanaged and is allowed to do his job.
Ooh.
Hey, this is Drake Lally, 510 Merrick. Um, just wanted to comment on the food truck discussion. In my previous life as a itinerant traveling musician, I played in a lot of cities, a lot of parks, a lot of downtowns and random places. And the presence of one or two food trucks always seemed to have a really positive impact on the people who were there, and also how long they stuck around in the area. So, uh, different festivals up north, I've, I've played, uh, in Traverse City a few times. Uh, it always really seemed to help actually keep people in the area longer. I've even seen food trucks partnering with bars and breweries and what have you, uh, who would actually allow the customers to bring the food inside and therefore spend more money at the local establishment as well, so there can be a nice partnership there, so. Uh, just wanted to throw my two cents in the ring in support of making it easy for food trucks to have their place here.
Hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Or.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned, and our regular meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. I
Can you hear me? Really?
Does someone say my name?
Hi, Mary. Can you hear me?
Yeah, who is that?
I'm Dorothy Schmidt. I'm right next door to you, but no picture. Yeah, you don't know me by picture. You know me by name only. And I'm a guest tonight. I'm just listening to what's going on.
Okay, so you live on my street? I don't know you.
Okay, I live at the corner of Butler and Elm Street.
Okay, that I'm not, I must, you must be thinking of different person because that's not where I live.
Okay, no, that's where I live.
Okay.
That's where I live. So I'm just here to listen.
Okay, all right. Well, welcome.
Thank you. Mary, I will give you my opinion, personal opinion about what's going on with Sterling Estate. And, and the issue.
Dorothy, I don't think that right now is the proper time to do that.
Okay.
It was during the meeting, but you're welcome to email me and we can connect that way if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay.
Either that or I can speak. It's just, you know, my opinion of Sterling Estate. They're a wonderful, wonderful organization.
Yep, so you are. You're welcome to speak during tonight's public comment section.
Okay, I will.
Okay, there you go.
How are you, Angie?
Good.
Good. Yeah, I've met you before once in City Hall.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't see you regularly because City Hall hasn't been open.
Right, right. Soon, hopefully very soon, it's gonna be wide open again.
Wide open, that's good. Yeah, because we miss that.
Yes.
We miss talking face to face with each other. But these meetings and getting used to the equipment and getting used to doing business that way has been an important addition to our lives, I think.
True. Very true, but yes, it, it sometimes it's nice because you don't have to like run in your car from meeting to meeting and you can just stay in one spot, but it just is not the same when you're not face to face. It really isn't.
That's right. That's right, but you do accomplish more in a shorter period of time.
Sometimes, sometimes I feel like more meetings because of it.
Sometimes, okay, sometimes you have to expand your, your conversations outside of meeting time. And good evening. Mr. Elliott, I have not met you before. I'm Dorothy Schmidt. I'm here as a guest.
Welcome. Nice to meet you virtually.
Thank you. And no picture. And Brad, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well, Dorothy. How are you?
Oh, good.
Good. Nice to hear your voice again. It's been a while.
Thank you. Hi, Alan. How are you tonight?
Oh, hi, Dorothy. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. I'm here as a guest. I have no, no issues before me at the moment.
All right. Well, good to hear from you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And how are you, Tamara?
I'm doing good, Dorothy. I've missed you too. I haven't been able to see you at City Commissioner or School Board.
That's right. I couldn't connect, but I connected tonight. I, I found my way through it.
I'm glad that you're weathering the storm. It's good to hear.
Hi, Robin. How are you tonight?
Good, Dorothy. How are you?
Good. Good. And things are moving along very nicely. And, and Gordon, I don't believe I met you before.
I don't believe so either. But it seems like you're well-liked by everybody in the group.
Oh, well, thank you.
I look forward for now you'll have an opportunity to meet you.
Well, good. Thank you.
Well, it is now seven o'clock, so I'm going to ask our city administrator Greg Elliott to please give our Zoom speech.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm City Administrator Greg Elliott. It's seven o'clock, and I'd like to address a few things before Mayor Heath officially calls us to order. For much of the meeting, we asked the participants, other than the commissioners and staff, to mute themselves to allow the commission to have their discussions and conduct their business. This will also help minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. Opportunities for public comment will be offered at different points throughout the meeting. At those times, participants can unmute themselves and will have an opportunity to address the commission. The three-minute rule will be in effect. When it is time for public comment, please identify your name and address for the record prior to making your statement. Once we formally begin the meeting, format and structure will be exactly the same as it is in person, and we will work through our agenda as usual. All commission rules and procedures remain in effect. We've talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable comment. If this occurs during the meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We will turn over the video of the meeting to law enforcement. Our agenda is available as is our agenda packet on our website at www.adriancity.com. Thank you all for participating tonight. Mayor Heath, I will turn the meeting over to you.
I now call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for March 15, 2021. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Hope.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes of the March 1st, 2021 regular meeting? Move to approve the minutes, Roberts.
Support, Watson.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
I move we pay the vouchers as presented.
Support, Castleberry.
Oh, help, sorry.
I got you, Alan.
I have a motion from Commissioner Help with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to amend the agenda to table Resolution R21-035 from Parks and Engineering, which is a resolution to award a bid for 2021 construction season for improvements to major and local roads.
Move to table the resolution.
For Strayer.
I have a motion. I'm sorry to interrupt, but could the motion be amended to include the date that you're tabling it to? We either have to say table to a specific date or table indefinitely, but I know you have a specific date in mind.
Okay, so I move to.
March 20 seconds, the date, yeah.
Yes, to table the resolution. R21-035 to Monday, March 22nd. Special meeting budget workshop.
Commissioner Strayer, do you still support?
I still support.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Strayer to amend the agenda to table Resolution R21-035 to March 22nd, 2021. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Motion to table Resolution R21-035 from Parks and Engineering until the March 22nd meeting is approved by unanimous vote.
In our regular agenda, under ordinances, we have a couple first readings tonight. Ordinance 21-004 is a first reading and introduction of an ordinance to amend the City of Adrian zoning regulations to the extent of deleting 1893 West Mommy, 1881 West Mommy, 1853 West Mommy, 1801 West Mommy, and 1701 West Mommy from the B1 Local Business District and including the same in the B2 Community Business District. At this time, I'm going to ask our city administrator Greg Elliott to please explain this ordinance for the first reading tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a strip of commercial properties. It's on the south side of West Mommy, west of Sand Creek Highway that are, as the introduction says, currently zoned B1. One of those property owners requested up. One of those property owners requested upzoning to B2, which is more inclusive, general commercial district. The planning commission in reviewing that request found that it would be necessary to rezone all the properties along that stretch to be consistent. And so that's what the ordinance proposes to do.
Thank you. Moving on, ordinance 21-005 is a first reading and introduction of an ordinance to amend Section 58-402 of the Adrian City Code False Alarm Definitions. At this time, I'm going to ask our city attorney, Tamires Henigan, to please explain this ordinance amendment.
Thank you. This is really simple. The subsequent parts of this chapter refer to the alarm user when determining what is allowed and what is prohibited. And it has come to our attention that in the definitions was not a specific definition for alarm user. So we looked at several common definitions across the state and actually across the nation, and they're all very similar to one another. So we've just put that together to add in so that there'll be more clarity in the future as to who is bound by the ordinance as the alarm user.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions, R 21-034 is from Parks and Engineering. It is a resolution to award a bid for lawn fertilization and pest control for city parks and other city-owned properties. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move adopt the resolution, help. Port, Strayer.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Sorry, Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hope.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 21-036 is from the Fire Department. It is a resolution to award a bid for completion of the fire station vehicle exhaust system. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Watson.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hope.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 21-037 is from Transportation. It is a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2022 City of Adrian application for state and federal funding to appoint Marshall Bohannon as the transportation coordinator and to authorize the mayor to sign the fiscal year 2022 contract clauses certification. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Strayer.
Support, Roberts. Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
In your packet are miscellaneous reports. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments on those reports? At this time, we are going to begin public comment. There is a three-minute time limit, and just to reiterate for the record, please state your name and address.
Yeah.
Ken Phil. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so election time is coming up, and I have a wish list for some of the people who are running. Commissioner Gordon, or Commissioner Goss, I'm sorry. I was hoping that you could kind of, when you're running, that you could push for a zero-based budgeting with the city. I think zero-based budgeting would be really good for the city. I think you've got, the police chief does it, the, the fire chief asks for everything into the world and then spends the money on other things. And I think zero-based would help us out. Commissioner Watson, my ask of you is to engage with the president of Adrian College. One of the things that the president requires is students live on campus for four years. Commissioner Watson, I would ask you to, as part of your campaign, try to create a relationship with President Dockey and try and get him to move to the city. Adrian College doesn't pay any taxes, and I would like to see the president live here. Um, Mayor and Commissioner Castleberry, I'm asking you guys to update the city charter. The Michigan Constitution, there's a law that every 16 years, it goes up to the voters. And actually, in 2026, the voters will be asked to update the constitution for the state of Michigan. We don't have anything like that in the City of Adrian. There's a lot of things in the City of Adrian ordinance that do not reference women. And I guess it's, I mean, does that mean that you guys aren't following the ordinance? So basically, in Section 4.1, it says he shall advise. In Section B, it says he shall file. In Section E, it says as prescribed for him. In Section 5.1, eligibility for office. No, um, he shall hold office. Doesn't say she, and he must be qualified. Another point, it says each candidate has to file his petition. He must be in good standing with the city. Um, no additional compensation unless his service has been recognized. So I think that this document to everyone here that the ordinances or the charter for the City of Adrian is outdated. Um, so Mayor Heath and Commissioner Castleberry, I would ask you to make that part of your campaign. And additionally, on a side note, I really, 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 really like to see you guys add in there something that would eliminate the at-large commission and go to.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. Just good to go back to your pre-meeting. I really, really support the concept of the food trucks. I think it could be a great boon for our city. And I just would encourage you to wait, as you discussed, many of you talked about this, until we are back to 100% occupancy in our restaurants and everybody's on a solid footing before we implement that plan. I, I just think we owe it to our restaurants who have done so much for us. And I will defer my two minutes and 22 seconds to Commissioner Halt.
See if that does it. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead and state his name and address.
My name is Dorothy Schmidt. And there is an issue before of the commission that.
Dorothy, if you state your address too, please.
Yes, I live at 428 Elm Street. And I have no, no attachment to Sterling Estates, except that it's a personal one. And you know, I delivered newspapers for 10 years in Adrian. And Sterling Estates was one of my customers. I, I knew the people well. Most of them are, are either handicapped or starting over or very retired citizens. They have a fixed income. They cannot handle additional expenses. The, the street needs to be paved next, which is the entry to Sterling Estates. It does that on an annual basis. And it does not need any new drains because it backs up to open land that even the deer graze on in, in a locked-in position for them so they don't bother anybody. But the trucks and, and the industry there make that road rough. It makes it, every, every year it needs repair. And to repair the road without additional drains would not be a major expense. To decide to put in drains where they are not needed and, and would intrude on, on the surrounding residents in the area would be a major flaw in decision-making, I think. And I think Sterling Estates would agree with you. They're wonderful people there, and they watch out for each other.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hearing no more public comments, I'm going to move on. Are there any commissioner comments? Hearing no commissioner comments, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Watson.
Support, help.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, and hopefully all of you tune into The Voice tonight. We have a local girl on tonight. So she, Rialana Doyle is going to be on tonight on The Voice. So, and she's a Lenawee County girl, so pretty exciting. Okay, thanks, everyone.
Al's got him on his DVR.